You are now live on YouTube.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started then. It is Tuesday, June 23rd. Welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting. And we'd like to welcome council member Montoya as well, who is joining us remotely. So um, let's get started with an invocation or a thought. I think I heard that we had a volunteer.
Yeah, Chairman Wood, I'll offer that if that's okay.
Please, and thank you.
The title is, that's what a community is. How does a group of individuals all with different backgrounds and different perspectives on life become a united community? A well-known columnist, David Brooks, says that's what a community is. He believes the answer lies in how we see each other. A bunch of people looking after each other, a bunch of people seeing each other and seeing each other deeply, taking the time to really enter into relationships with each other and to depend upon one another. That's the glue that's holding us together.
Great, thank you. Would anyone like to lead us in the plan?
I'll do that, Trevor. Please stand.
Please repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, tonight on the agenda, we will start with a public forum. After that, we've got discussion and possible action items, which include a public hearing on a Main Street Business District Architectural Requirements Revision. We have a discussion on the heels at Summit Ridge Phasing Plan Update. We have discussion on proposed changes to the Main Street Residential Zone and discussion on the general plan. After that, we will discuss further planning mission business, which will include approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was on June 9th, and then we expect to adjourn. So with that said, let's move ahead into the public forum, which I'll open at 7:09. Do we have any input from the public in the public forum?
Doesn't look like there's any comments for the public forum.
Okay, then we will close the public forum at 7:09 PM. And let's move into Agenda Item 6A. This is a public hearing and discussion on Main Street Business District Architectural Requirement.
Hey Chairman Wood, if I may, so can you see the agenda up on your screen right now?
I cannot.
Okay, let me, let me make sure I share that screen and get that working. All right, how about now?
Yep, there it is.
Okay. So um, yeah, the Main Street Business District Architectural Requirement. So this is a proposed amendment, which will, will have a public hearing tonight. But essentially what this amendment is, is the Architectural Review Committee, which consists of myself, representative from the City Council, who's council member Nick Miller, a representative from the Planning Commission, who's Commissioner Kylie Lance, and then we have a couple professional architects, designers who are here in our community. That'd be Tim Ringer, who worked for Cloud H2O, Ron Jones, who works for WPA. And that's it, right? So the ARC, we've had a applications that have come to the ARC committee in the past and in certain zones and in certain areas of town. As we've looked at primary exteriors of the building, there's, there's been some, some cases where we've been able to, to work with them on, on the use of hardy board or a cement board type material where, where that area of the city doesn't have specific language that prohibits that, that particular material or that, that, that finish. However, in the Main Street Business District Zone, which would consist of the CBD, the MSC and the MSR zones, it specifically prohibits that particular material. As ARC, we've talked about this in the past, and, and I think we're, we acknowledge and we see hardy board being a pretty good material that, that has really become more commonly used. And in fact, there's, there's a trend to have a lot of that in the form of like board and batten and lap siding and things like that. So um, with that said, this, this proposed amendment would, would address that language that specifically mentions that type of material. And on the screen that I have, I have language there. The, the red language would be what, what would be stricken and repealed from the, or proposed to be repealed from the code. And then there's, there's new language that's underlined in blue. So essentially what this would be doing is, is not specifically prohibiting a masonry siding material, but then creating a new subsection C, it would read concrete siding products, i.e. hardy board, is considered a primary exterior finish, but can only cover 75% of each elevation and must be accompanied by at least one of their primary exterior finish. So take sound on that a little bit. While, while we think it's a great material, we didn't feel like it was maybe something that needed to be 100% allowed and used. We still think brick and rock and things of that nature would still be good to have as part of that architectural design. However, allowing for a larger percentage of a cement board type material, you know, there's a trend for a lot of board and batten and, and a look that's associated with that. We felt like it's a quality product, that it's something that should be that the code, particularly in the Main Street Business District Zone, should allow more of. So that's, that's the proposal that's on the table. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that. I think I pretty much summed it up and don't have too much more to say on it, but this is a public hearing and this is going to require a public hearing and I look to you for your, your direction, Trevor.
Okay, thanks for that introduction. Since we do have a public hearing scheduled, let's go ahead and move into that now. So I will open the public hearing at 7:14. Do we have any input from the public or anyone there who would like to comment?
So we don't have anybody here in attendance or anybody that signed up for the public hearing, and there's nothing that has been submitted.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 7:14 and we can move into discussion. So Commissioners thoughts or questions?
Um, I don't know a lot about hardy board. Does that require maintenance? Like, is that something that has to be painted? Is it a dyed product? Because the permitted materials, you know, that's one thing they all have in common is it's not something that needs paint or maintenance. And so that would really be my only concern is, is this something that's going to require upkeep?
I mean, I think all, all materials will require some form of upkeep, but, but concrete or a masonry siding product, it requires a lot less maintenance than say stucco or, or things like that. I mean, you know, it could require paint from time to time and, and whatnot, but it is a pretty, my understanding of it, it's a pretty high-quality material that's, that's used more in construction these days.
Yeah.
What's the difference between hardy board and stucco? It's both concrete, right?
Well, stucco is a, is a product that's usually sprayed on and it hardens. A hardy board would be like a cement board that is, is already prefabricated and it's, it's put on the side of the building. And maybe Kylie, you know, she, she sees a lot of homes. I don't know if you, if you can expand on that more.
I do. I like the look. I think the farmhouse look is really popular right now. And so I do like the thought of diversifying what they can put on the, as primary masonry material. However, I am kind of on the fence just because it will need to be painted like every 10 years. And so, I mean, naturally, if it's a responsible citizen, they're going to make sure that it's maintained properly. But if they're not, then we might end up with some, you know, not so great looking buildings. But uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence. I do like the hardy material for sure. And I think you can really dress up a building because there's, you know, board and batten, there's the siding look, then you've got the shakes you can use. I mean, there's a lot you can really do with that.
When I saw this, I felt like we, we were lowering our standards and maybe doing a disservice to those buildings that already exist. Why did we require of them a higher standard than now? We're saying it's okay to have what I consider something less. I wouldn't like to do this, but if we are going to do it, I'd like it to be a much smaller percentage, maybe 25% instead of 75%.
Jason, if I can say something here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go for it.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Okay, so the hardy board is, is like actually a concrete board, but a lot of what people are putting on are made to look like hardy board, and they're actually not that, that concrete material. They're like a fiber, wood fiber board that is much lighter and, and much more inexpensive. And they, they look the same basically, especially once they're painted, people can't tell. But there are different types of it that look the same that, that people are using.
To save money, probably.
And presumably those products wouldn't hold up as well over time. Is that your understanding?
Uh, they're much cheaper, so that would be the presumption, yeah. But the, I know the, the high, the high quality ones come, at least my understanding, they come in certain colors. You can order them in certain colors. They're the ones that are the actual like the actual concrete board. But the ones that are wood just come in a, like a tan, like fiber, it's basically wood fibers that are shaped like that. And so it's just a tan. So those ones do, like what Kylie said, is would need to be repainted. I actually have that on my house and it is not the hard concrete ones. It's the, it's the lighter ones, but you can't tell from looking at it, you, you can't tell the difference. But the question is over, you know, a 30, 40 year period of time, how they would hold up?
And a follow-up question to that is, do we have processes in place that would allow us to tell the difference, basically? Or would it just rely on, you know, the goodwill of whoever's building the building?
Well, as we review these, these applications and take them through the ARC, as we look at percentages of exterior materials that are used, we, we make sure that it's designated as, as hardy board or brick or whatever the case may be. Obviously, brick and stone is pretty easy to spot, but nonetheless, we still verify that it's listed as such so that, that, uh, you know, it can be verified that they're meeting the, the percentages that are required.
And would that be something that would be covered on an inspection?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, we, we look at those things, but I don't think our, our, our building inspectors are, are, you know, necessarily like testing it to make sure that it's right. But if, if there was a concern that was brought up, it would definitely be pointed out to them that their plans indicate a hardy board product and not something else.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Oh, okay. So I guess one of the concerns. Okay, so if we're talking, if the language is going to specifically say hardy board, that is a specific brand of this material. And so I think if we're going to include that, I think we should make the language like cement siding or something to that effect. So because hardy is a specific type of, of brand for this product.
And the proposed language does call for concrete siding products, for example, hardy board. So it does specify it's got to be a concrete siding.
Are you taking this request often? Like, is this something that you see quite a bit?
I mean, yeah, I, like I say, I think there's a trend to use more, like, like you indicated, more of a farmhouse look with, with board and batten and that sort of thing.
Which does fit the aggregarian look that we request. So it's kind of hard to say.
Yep. And, and it's, you know, I scrolled up a little bit because you can see that there are certain percentages required. So it's not like a there's not some flexibility, you know, a concrete siding product and even stucco can be used as a secondary material. So it's not, it's not like, you know, it's got to be 100% or nothing. But I think the, the reason for the 75% of each elevation is, is to not fully commit to concrete siding and have it 100% but to provide for a little bit more of it and to allow it as an exterior finish, when right now it's just prohibited as a primary exterior finish. So it would give a little more flexibility to have some diversity in the, the products that they use for, for their architectural design.
So we're forwarding a recommendation to the city council.
Correct. This would be in an ordinance amendment and would require your recommendation, the city council to approve it.
I think it looks nice and trends are moving in that direction. So I think this is something we ought to consider. I don't know, Commissioners, what are you thinking?
Well, sorry if I may speak again. Yeah, trend, I mean, I'm concerned about, I mean, I like the material, but trends changed. I mean, in, in 20 years, it could be a completely different trend where this could be. So I'm, so it's a popular product now. I don't know that that would, should be the, the long-term, I mean, as far as the criteria for it to follow the, the trend, you know, you know, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, fair enough.
Because I think, you know, trends will change and there are some trends that have been like from the architecture from the 1970s was horrific. And so in some, in some cases, but so I'm just saying, like, like I think we should look past the, the current trends because just understanding those will shift.
I think my biggest concern is longevity. I, I want Main Street, I want this area to really just, you know, long-term look really nice. So I, I think it's a durable material. It's just the, the paint maintenance would be my biggest concern. So honestly, I'm on the fence.
That's what I was going to ask. Other than paint, do we have any idea how this material holds up over time? I mean, has it been around long enough that we know that it will last?
So it's basically a composite concrete material, right? I mean, so it's.
Yeah, it's a cement and fiber blend.
So I think it's pretty durable.
Should be pretty durable.
Yeah, it's durable. And like I said, the, what you see mostly on houses, I believe is kind of a knockoff. It's that you're not actually seeing the cement blend. It's actually like a wood fiber one. Those need to be painted, but I think the cement ones you can actually get, you can have them ordered in a certain color already, from what I understand.
I see. And so.
It sounds like as long as we're focusing on concrete and not allowing the wood fiber product, longevity really shouldn't be an issue more than anything else, right, that we allow?
That, I would understand, but I'm not an expert by any means on it, but that's, that's my understanding.
Right. So should we discuss more the percentage? If, I mean, assuming that we're heading in the direction of forwarding a positive recommendation, is everyone good with 75%?
So Art has a comment and then I have a comment after.
Art, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can, is your microphone on?
I can't get closer to this microphone.
There's a couple problematic ones.
Is this any better?
No.
Is yours working all right, Kylie?
Yeah.
Maybe send Kylie over to him.
How's this, Trevor?
That's much better.
I just wonder what the Commissioners' thoughts were about reducing the percentage maybe to, if not 25%, maybe reduce it to 50%.
Can we think of any examples of, of buildings that have used this material that would give us an idea of what a suitable percentage would be? You know what I mean?
So I wonder if we look into what Kyle's referencing and find out if there's a specific, you know, if the brand hardy doesn't have to be painted. I mean, I'm for it all day long, if that's the case.
So I took the liberty of just Googling it on my phone.
Brad.
So this is from modernized.com. I don't know how reputable that site is, but they say that while the paint job on fiber cement siding lasts longer than wood, usually anywhere between five to 15 years, it eventually will need to be redone. Then it does mention that if you go with a pre-painted option or the boards come colored by the manufacturer, many will guarantee their products against chipping and peeling for around 15 years. So for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Google.
Well, I mean, that's really my only concern. Like I say, the other primary materials that are listed, brick, stone, natural, split face block or cut stone. None of those require that cosmetic maintenance, I guess. I mean, there's obviously water damage and other issues. But I'm just trying to decide how much I care about the maintenance issue.
Me too. And honestly, you're not going to get that farmhouse look unless you get 75% of that on the building.
Really? You think it's that much?
That's the reason I'm kind of, I'm teetering on reducing that is because then it kind of.
What about the perception that we're reducing or watering down our standards all of a sudden?
Well, I, I think a lot of these materials, while I think it's important to think of longevity, I think the way they're listed in the code has more to do with the way they look. Everything requires maintenance. Everything requires some sort of attention brought to it. And whether it lasts 10 years or 15 years or 20 years, I mean, it's, it's going to require some, some form of maintenance. So as I've looked at this, this code and stuff, I think it has more to do with making sure that proportions are used, that, you know, stucco is, is not necessarily looked at as, as the best-looking product. It has its place and I think it, it's, it's still allowed as a secondary material. But in terms of, of the look, I, you know, I think Kylie hit the nail on the head that with this, this farmhouse look and, and while it might be a trend, I think that look is, is proven to be kind of timeless where, where, you know, the farm look, the agrarian look is, is, has very clean, simple lines that, that to me are pretty timeless. So that's, that's how I kind of look at this. I know that concrete board is a, a, a quality product. It's not going to be, I, I don't think it's, it's, it's anywhere in the, the same level of, of quality as, as say stucco or, or, you know, corrugated metal is, is probably has more longevity than, than a lot of other things, but it just, that's not the look that we're going for. So that, that's kind of where, where I was coming from and where I think is, as we've looked at these, you know, we've had applications that have come in that, that people have really been excited about and thought looked really good. But unfortunately, because of the type of product, it's just not, it doesn't meet our code. And so it, it kind of gears things back to, to something that, that creates a combination of other, of other materials that, that may not be as, as desired in terms of the way it looks.
And on those applications that we've turned away, can you sort of venture a ballpark guess on what percentage of this product would have been included in those applications?
Oh, I think 20, 30%. That's why we have the number at 75 is to make sure that, that some of this farmhouse look would, would be able to happen. You know, the board and batten, it's, it's long vertical lines. In order for that to work, it needs to span the, the face of the building from the base to the top and, and only having board and batten, you know, for maybe the top portion of a gable doesn't quite create the same effect. So if you're doing those long vertical lines in, in the, the form of, of a board and batten look, you're going to need a high percentage in order for that, that, that style or that look to, to even be a possibility.
Okay, thanks. What do you think?
I think I'm open to this. You know, I, I like to trust that people will maintain, especially commercial. I, you know, it would be interesting to see what new developments, what new looks we can have.
I think it fits the aggregarian request that we put upon them, so.
I agree. All, all code changes are an experiment as well, you know, in some respect. And if we find it doesn't work, it could always be changed later as well.
Well, maybe another point that I'd make is, and I'm not going to pick on anybody, but there's some brick buildings in town that are not attractive looking buildings. So they could be, they could last forever. They could last for 30 years, but just because it's brick doesn't mean it's a good-looking building. And in some cases, you know, people, a trend now is to paint the brick. If it's, if it's a 1970s brick that, that Kyle referred to, that, that is, is, you know, has a kind of a weird texture or a weird color to it. But uh, yeah, so again, I go back to, I think a lot of this has to do with, with the look and, and I think board and batten's a, a very attractive look that is, is a, you know, a desired look right now.
Okay, I think we're coalescing around an agreed-upon opinion. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation on the Main Street Business District Architectural Requirements be updated to incorporate the verbiage as presented with 75% of each elevation of the building being allowed to have a hardy board or concrete board material.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I will say.
Okay, we have a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Frankham.
Aye.
Commissioner Lance.
Aye.
Commissioner Gunnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Adcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Wood, aye. So that motion passes unanimously. So thank you, everyone. That was a good discussion. With that, let's move on to Agenda Item 6B. This is the Hills at Summit Ridge Phasing Plan Update.
All right, so this, this is a, it's specifically mentioned as, as the phasing plan, but really what this is, is kind of a re-preliminary process for the Hills at Summer Ridge. The reason for that is because they have, are trying to address their phasing plan to, to make the phases, the construction of the phases work a little bit better for them. The reason why this is coming back to the Planning Commission and would be needing to be approved again by the City Council is because there is what would be considered a major change where they would be adding a road between a couple of phases in order to make accessibility work a little bit better and, and allow them to, to take a little bit, a little bit better approach at, at the phasing of this development. So really the main thing to point out here is you can see this road. This road that is kind of between Phase E and D, that road was not there before. It is going to be there to give them some better access throughout the phasing. And because it's a new road by code, it's determined to be a major change and requires action from the Planning Commission and City Council. I mean, in a nutshell, this is really pretty straightforward. It's basically just adding that road and providing a little bit better connectivity within, within this particular development. So with that said, that's really the reason why it's here tonight. And we would just ask that the, the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to the City Council for them to consider approval of this, this change.
Okay, thanks for that introduction. I had one question. Did that road eliminate any lots? It looks like, if my math is correct, it may have eliminated two lots.
Correct. So it would be a slight reduction in lots. Obviously, with a road going through there, it's, it's going to take up some, some square footage that, that would have been in lots. So yeah, there's a little bit of rearranging that needed to do on that part. We worked with them on, on making this phasing plan work right where it wasn't going to, to impact trails and, and, and other things. So yeah, there is, this does reduce the lots slightly, but not my much.
Okay, Commissioners, what do you think?
I'm all in favor of connectivity.
I think it's an improvement, so.
Yeah, I also just wanted, whoever put attachments together, I just wanted to compliment them. I really liked having the before, after, and then the third one highlighting the changes. Thank you for making it easy.
Yeah, agreed. Kyle, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I was just saying, anytime that we can improve the flow of traffic, I think it's a great thing.
I agree. So it seems pretty straightforward. Is there any other discussion or questions that we need to talk about on this one?
You know what? When Brad said that, I think I was showing you the wrong map. The, the actual road is not between, I can get my mouse to work, is not between E and F. It's actually this road.
Between C and D.
Yeah.
And D3, correct. That, that is not looking right to me because I knew it was close to a trail. So yeah, it'd actually be this road. The one I was highlighting before was this one. That one's always been planned to be there. It'd be this road here that would provide better connectivity, just to make sure that I'm pointing out the, the right area.
Jason, this doesn't really apply to what we're looking at, but coming out of E going south, going down, that road eventually will go into M or whatever, M, right? Okay.
So thanks for bringing that up, Brad.
Um, so a question that's not really related, but there, it looks like there's some parking spaces right there by that new road.
Correct. Correct.
Is, is that for trail access or is there something else going on there?
Uh, kind of both. On the corner there, the uh, the, the south part of this intersection, uh, there's going to be a dog park there. So there's a, a park that's going to be dedicated to the city, which connects to this. Uh, this is actually a power line easement, which they will put a trail underneath that power line. So there'll be a trail and then up here, there's, there's a lot of open space, uh, that's on, on top of that knoll, uh, which will provide a kind of a little trail network. But yeah, the, the area that you see where the parking is at is, is next to a dog park. There's also a, a trailhead down here with a, a, a few parking stalls for, for people to access that trail. As well as a, a, a little, this was something that, that uh, we, we kind of worked with them on, but the trail comes to the east and uh, it ends right there. The chances of, of a bridge or something being made over, over the union, union specific railroad is slim to numb, none. So uh, there, there'd be kind of like a, 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 and, and a park at the end of that, that, that would provide kind of a good uh, lookout view of um, you know, the south part of Santaquin and, and, and uh, the mountains to the east. So yeah, there's, there's a few things in here that, that will provide some amenities for the residents.
I think that sounds good. Thanks for that explanation. Anything else, commissioners? If not, then I would love to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to city council to accept the updated phasing plan for the Hills at Summit Ridge Development.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Uh, let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Wood. I. Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Gunell.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Frankham.
I.
Okay, that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. And with that, we can move on to agenda item six C. This is a discussion on proposed changes to the Main Street Residential Zone.
So Commissioner Wood, uh, there's been some uh, correspondence this afternoon. Uh, we, we were uh, uh, doing some things to make sure that we had a quorum here tonight. However, as you know, we have uh, a lot of our planning commissioners who are absent. We have some that, that were able to make it here tonight to, to attend a short meeting to get a couple of time sensitive things taken care of. Uh, items C and D on the agenda are going to take a little bit more time to, to discuss, flesh out. Plus, we would probably prefer to have more planning commissioners to get their input and, and to get their, their fillings on, on the general plan update a- as well as the, the proposed changes in that MSR uh, zone that are, are going to be a little bit more extensive regarding detached accessory dwelling units uh, and so forth. So uh, with that, we, we uh, in talking with, with uh, the planning commission, we would, we would suggest that those items be tabled so that we can have a, a, a better attendance and, and more input from our, our planning commissioners who weren't able to make it tonight.
Yep, I agree. One hundred percent. I think that's a good idea. So um, in light of that, we need a motion to table.
I'll make that motion to table discussion on uh, those two items.
Um, can we do them together or do they need to be individually done?
Maybe make them individually.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to table the discussion on item six C.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Frankham.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Gunell.
I.
Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Wood. I. So agenda item sixty is tabled and that was unanimous. And we will move on to agenda item six D. The same discussion applies in this case, and so we're looking for a motion to table.
I will make a motion to table this uh, item six D.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Let's vote. Commissioner Wood. I. Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Gunell.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Frankham.
I.
Okay. Agenda item six D is tabled until our next meeting and that was unanimous. So let's move on to agenda item seven, planning commission business. We need to approve the minutes from our previous meeting, which was on June ninth. Do we need to have any discussion on those minutes before we proceed?
I talked to Kira before the meeting about the minutes, made some very minor grammatical changes, but on page two where it quotes me as saying that I suggested that a few buildings be removed. I also mentioned during that meeting on other option of making it two-story instead of three, and she added that change to the minutes. That being the case, I'd make a motion that we approve them.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second and let's vote. Commissioner Frankham.
I.
Commissioner Lance.
I.
Commissioner Gunell.
I.
Commissioner Adcock.
I.
Commissioner Wood. I. Those minutes are approved unanimously. So is there any other business we need to discuss in the meeting tonight?
I won't, I won't keep you. I, I appreciate uh, planning commissioners making it a, a possibility to have a quorum tonight so we can take care of those couple of time sensitive things. Obviously, we don't have a, another regularly scheduled meeting until July fourteenth because we have a, a fifth Tuesday. So uh, I don't want to keep you much longer, but just a reminder that Monday, uh, we have that special uh, training for, for uh, elected and appointed officials with the Utah League of Cities and Towns Legal Counsel David Church. So that's a Monday evening at six thirty. We'll hold that in the downstairs uh, training room so we can spread out a little bit more and, and uh, uh, we look forward to that. So I have nothing for you unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any business we need to discuss or any questions?
No.
Okay. Sounds like we can wrap it up. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I will make a motion to adjourn. And we will call it at seven forty-four. Thank you, everyone.